Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of November 24th, 2020. As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me.
This conference will now be recorded.
Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Wendy Steinhillblair. Wendy? Ron Brooks. Nicholas Lynch.
Present.
Steve Chambers couldn't make it tonight. Todd Karain.
Present.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Planner, Adam Menard.
Yeah.
Staff Assistant, Rachel Pressy.
Yeah.
The dialing coil is not here tonight, so let me move on. Good evening. This is the open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, November 24th, 2020, now called to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting on the town's website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening by remote participation for the public only, although some members of the Planning Board...
(inaudible)
You have to run Wendy?
(inaudible)
Wendy, you're muted.
I don't know. Now I gotta go test it. That's great. And I haven't turned on the YouTube channel.
All right, go ahead.
I know, Joe.
Okay, go ahead.
For the public, join the meeting remotely by telephone call 1312-757-3121 and enter access code 133747477, or the public can join via computer at thegotomeeting.com/join/13374747. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Vision. Accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees and members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Over a few business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or emotions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. The Chair has a list of all public commentators. I will call on each by name for three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. First up on the agenda, 7:00 PM applicant, it's JT Acquisitions LLC requesting site plan approval under Section 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for construction of two buildings on currently vacant land with landscaping and stormwater management improvements on the property located at 15 Technology Drive, Auburn, Mass., Map 42, Parcel 40. May I have a motion to open the meeting?
Ronnie Brooks. John, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Wendy, sign over a second.
Thank you, Wendy. Is there anyone here representing the applicant, JT Acquisitions LLC?
Can you do a roll call?
Okay, roll call, I'm sorry. Board members, I'll call you by name. Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Wendy Steinhillblair?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers isn't here. Todd Karain?
Aye.
Now may I have a motion to open the meeting?
He just said...
Ronnie said...
Ron.
Ron made the motion. I need a second.
He needs a second. He needs a roll call.
So is there anyone here from the applicant, JT Acquisitions LLC? Todd? You're muted.
Sorry.
That's okay. I'm not having a good night either, Todd, so...
Sorry?
Please go ahead.
You good? I'm sorry. Yep, I'm here representing JT Acquisitions LLC. On the line, we should have Jade Boyes from DC Engineering, who's a project engineer, and Justin Eisner and Tim Johnson are the owners of JT Acquisitions and the project proponents here. So, we are here for a site plan approval for 15 Technology Drive. This was, this is a two-acre parcel of land that was carved off from the Briskon Electric property some time ago, and JT Acquisitions purchased the property and has been going through a period of review on it and has settled on the plan that is in front of you. The project is in the general industrial zone within the Aquar 2 Protection Ovallet District. What the applicant would like to do here is construct a 9,600 square foot industrial building that would be divided up into any number of different tenant areas, space for them to utilize, and it would be a variety of uses. They're gonna see what the market brings to them, but it could be trade folks, plumbers like Trinkin' who are storing materials and/or work trucks and vans in the premises. It could be landscapers, it could be general contractors and the like. So, this would be space put out for rent, and the space would be utilized by those tenants. The plan generally for the site is to construct the building that is on the right-hand portion of the plan in front of you in the first phase. Wait to see how that building goes in terms of the usage of it, in terms of what the market brings to the owners here, and if successful, move on to building number two. But in doing so, we would have to address parking numbers on the site and potentially some other items, but particularly parking. So what's really in front of you tonight is to look at the approval of the building on the right and the associated site improvements that are designated on the plan. Everything is designed on the site to accommodate the second building in terms of stormwater, impervious area and the like, but it wouldn't be constructed, and the parking would need to be addressed at some point prior to construction of that second building. So, that is really in broad strokes, kind of an overview of what the intention of the project is. Jay is on the line from DC Engineering. He can walk you through some of the site details in terms of drainage and utilities and whatnot, and before I turn it to him, Adam had asked for permission to send this out for peer review, which we consented to, and I understand that review is not back yet, and so we do understand that at the end of this proceeding tonight, we would be continuing the hearing into a further date to be able to address and have the Board have the benefit of that peer review letter, but we certainly would like to get through any concerns and comments and try to address those either tonight or if further work is needed on these items, bring those back to you at the continued hearing date. So, Jay, if you're on the line, can you walk us through stormwater and site layout and utilities?
Sure. Jason Boyes, DC Engineering and survey. I think Todd gave a pretty good overview of the project, so I'll just kind of get into some of the details briefly without getting too technical on them. So, the site drainage pretty much sheds to the east and to the west, basically each direction of the site, and we're kind of matching that with the proposed drainage pattern as well. We do have a paved parking area with drive aisles and parking spaces and obviously impervious roofs, and we are collecting that runoff on the parking lot with areas of catch basins and pipes that would go to a water quality unit and ultimately into a detention basin on the eastern side of the site as well as the western side of the site again to match that existing flow pattern before it's ultimately discharged and continues downstream. We do have water, water tying into the building with a six-inch for fire suppression and also a domestic line, and since there is the potential for vehicles to be parked in this building, we are required to show a floor drain that does go to an oil-water separator, and that would be tied into sewage, which is available in the street as well, so the building would be connected to that. There is a landscaping plan that just shows some proposed trees along the roadway, along the front portion of the site as well as both left and right budding properties. We do have some trees shown, also some sight... We have wall pack lighting on the building and two proposed light poles in the parking areas. The site does have two entrances in and out of the site on either end of the site, so basically it would flow in one end and be double act, inner-out on both of those entrances. And we do have parking shown along the Technology Drive side of the property, and on the eastern side of the property, as you can see, adjacent to the proposed phase one. I guess that's about all I have on the design aspect of it. Now, is there any questions?
Any questions from the public that may be attending? Being done, I'll go through the list of our members. Nicholas, do you have any questions or comments?
John, it's Ronnie.
What'd he say?
I didn't catch him. He's muted.
No, this is Nick. I have no questions.
Wendy, do you have any questions?
I'm off, thank you.
Ron?
John, I have a question for Adam. Adam, do we allow multiple uses in that general industrial zone up there?
Todd, I don't recall exactly what you went to ZBA for, but I believe you did get those permissions from ZBA.
Yeah, sorry. I should have mentioned that, Mr. Brooks, we went to the Zoning Board of Appeals and received a use variance to allow for multiple structures and multiple uses on the same lot.
Okay.
You all set, Ron?
Yes, thank you.
Todd, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I do. I just have a couple of questions for, on page S1, drawing number S1, I believe it's the one you have called up here. Along the, where your driveway exits out onto Technology Drive, where I would expect to see a handicap ramp, the note actually calls for vertical granite curving at entrance roundings. Is the intention to put vertical curving or to put handicap ramps sloping down to the driveway level for mobility-challenged pedestrians that might be walking along there, which is, I believe, required by ADA?
Yeah, we would have handicap accessibility on both of those entrances, so I can modify that.
Okay, great. Couple other questions on, let's see, on drawing number D1, your standard ramp ADA requirements. If this is going out to the street, your standard does not show a detectable warning panel, which is generally required unless it's crossing the driveway. So my question, was this intended to cross the driveway where you wouldn't need one, or is this going out into, leading to a street or public way where one would be required?
I'll have to check on that. I mean, we show a standard sidewalk ramp detail. If detectable, I'll have to check on that detail.
Okay, thank you. One last question on the, on drawing number D2 for the standard lighting. I just want to confirm it's LED and is it Duck Sky compliant?
They are LED. I don't know if they've been picked at this point, but any requirements by the town, we have no issues with what this is going along with.
Okay, thank you. I just have a follow-up question for Adam. Only, I'm the new guy, so I'm not sure on the standard town protocol. I just want to make sure that there's conditions through the DPW that any damage to the sidewalks or roadways are restored and climbed by the contractor, that's common and required, and not necessarily needing to be called out on the site plans?
I would have to double-check on that with the DPW Director. I would assume so, but I'd want to confirm that.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set. Now, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions myself. I see that there's proposed 296 hundred-square-foot buildings, one to be built now and maybe one to be built later, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so when you make both buildings the same size, I don't know if the parking spaces you have allotted for the one on the right is enough to handle the one on the left?
So, that is the issue as to why, partly why building two wouldn't be constructed at this time, because parking compliance couldn't, we couldn't meet the parking requirements that are currently in the bylaw for this size of a structure. We feel that the parking will be adequate, as shown, for both buildings because this is not a customer, intended to be a customer-facing operation at all, and these are for the users, these are for supplies and whatnot. This is not for customer usage, so this will be those operators and/or their employees that may be coming and going from a particular building, and so we feel at some point we'll be able to prove that out. Not right now, and we did not want to seek a variance on parking at this time until building one was operational and we could show what the parking requirements felt like on a realistic level, and that would also give building one the time to be built and utilized and hopefully fully tenanted and making money for the owner before building two was constructed. So, we do realize that we will have to address parking as part of the construction of building two.
Okay, my next question is, the building on the right's going to be multipurpose, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's going to be supplies coming into the building depending on the business. I don't see a loading and unloading area designated. So by, in turn, why I'm saying that, Todd, is because if you park north-south on the right-hand side of the building, you're going to take up three or four spaces, you kind of lose your parking space. So I don't know if they could even be counted, or wherever you may park the unloading van. Could be a trailer truck, could be a box truck, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess, operationally, that would have to be something that would be figured out, the 28-foot drive aisle in front of the building on the right, there's less of a drive aisle, well, I guess it's 28 feet on the other building, but, you know, there's room there. I think you're speaking to sort of temporary loading and unloading, and these would be bays, which would be probably drivable into, and Jay might be able to explain better, but I think between the rear of the building and the front of the building, you probably have sufficient area, but there's no area specifically designated for loading or unloading.
And I don't see a snow removal place to put the snow that's plowed off of the paved areas.
Jay, do you have a place designated on the plans for snow removal?
I do not. No, I do not, but I can show that on revision. I can show snow storage areas.
But if they stay on the pavement near a catch basin, you're going to lose the parking spaces. So there may be a 28-wide bay from, say, the end of the handicap ramp to the curb on the other side. Is that the 28 feet, Todd?
Yeah.
Well, you lose that because you have parking spaces on the other side. So now 18 and 18 is 36. You only have 38 feet total, so it leaves 10 feet if your car's parked on both ends.
I'm not sure if you're speaking to issues that would be related to snow storage?
No, this is for parking spaces, which could also be related to snow storage as well, because you can't figure the spaces on the right-hand side near the curb as part of a drive or pathway through. You've got to figure the space between the ends of the two spaces. So they're both 18 inches. It's a total of 46 feet, I mean 18 feet. It's a total of 18 and 18 is 36, and if it's only a total of 42 or 44, forgive me for my math error at the moment, but that doesn't leave you the 28 feet you just told us. That's what I'm saying. So if a car parked on either side of that area, you don't have that gap between, like you think.
Sure. Well, so I think for snow storage, I think there's plenty of area around the edges on the site that isn't going to be impervious to deal with snow storage, but, you know, I don't think the owners think that there will be a need for the loading and unloading areas, but perhaps when we deal with building two, we look more closely at that. I mean, right now, that whole area would be available for such a purpose. Perhaps we slide the building slides one way or the other. I don't think that we really thought about the loading and unloading in particular.
Down the road, to manage the parking required per building, I don't think your second building can be that big. You won't have enough room for parking or snow removal, I don't think.
We talked about that. It's, you know, I don't know that the 9,600 is set in stone. That was the intention, and that would be the desire, but I don't disagree that when we look at building two and coming online with that, it may trigger the need to make some modifications to that building or parking areas related to that building, but all of which, and I'm not trying to be dismissive, but all of which we would certainly look at when building two was ready to come online. We're showing it on the plan to suggest that it's in the future plans, but we're also wanting to be clear that it's not going to be constructed at this time. We know we'd need parking relief, and we know we'd have to look at some of these further site issues that you're identifying, but we did want to discuss it and exactly, you know, hear the concerns and exactly like you're raising right now.
So is the area of the building on the left going to be paved in the interim?
I believe so.
Or a grass plot or something?
Sorry?
Or a grass plot of that size? Because it's cheaper to plant grass.
No, I think it would be paved, right, Jay? I'm not following, the grass area where?
Where the other building is going to be proposed, the building on the left, is that whole area going to be paved or are you going to make that a grassed area? Because the grassed area reduces your...
I don't think it would be...
Grassed area reduces...
I don't think it would be...
Go ahead.
I don't think it would be grass, potentially like gravel at this point or milling just to kind of hold the place of the building, because it would be utilizing the front area as the drive aisle to be a second means of egress in and out of the site.
If it's stone...
And it would be the stormwater, so...
If it's stone, it reduces your impervious areas greatly. If it's milling...
Yeah.
It counts as pavement.
Yeah, currently, the site is, the stormwater is designed for it to be built, so it could be gravel or millings or impervious, and it would meet the requirements.
Okay, so on your drainage, on sheet C1, the catch basins collect the water and put it in the detention pond, correct? And then it exits the detention...
Yes.
It exits the detention pond to the north, correct?
Correct.
Where does it go from there?
It continues down in the direction towards the butter. It is quite a ways away from that property line, and there is a fairly large river rap apron there, so it should disperse. And again, that's where the runoff is currently going now also.
I think that there's no drainage on Technology Drive?
I don't believe we picked up any catch basins out there, you know, within the front of our parcel, and the runoff from the site is really coming out to the street, it's heading east and west.
I understand that, but if it runs down to the other neighbor's property, it's more than they're getting now. You can't do that, and you can't let it wind its way out to Route 20 either. So, I mean, that's up to the peer review, that detention pond will hold the water long enough? Have you talked to the sewer department about your connection to the street?
No, I have not spoke to the sewer department.
They may make you put a manhole on Technology Drive, and your line from your sewer manhole on your property out, because it's taken in two six-inch lines, may have to be upgraded to an eight-inch.
Okay.
And then we get to the details. The Barron Industries no longer exist. You can't refer to them anymore. Go to EJ Foundry, Nina Foundry, talk to the town to find out what their specific catch basin and manhole covers are granted, but you can't refer to something that does not exist. And there is, there will not be 12 inches...
there, so it should disperse. And again, that's where the, that's where the runoff is currently going now also.
I take it there's no drainage on Technology Drive?
I don't believe we picked up any catch basins out there, you know, within the front of our parcel. And, you know, the runoff from the site is barely coming out to the street. It's heading east and west.
No, I understand that, but if it runs down to the other neighbor's property, it's more than they're getting now. You can't do that and you can't let it wind its way out to Route 20 either. So, I mean, that's up to the peer review, that detention pond will hold the water long enough? Have you talked to the sewer department about your connection to the street?
I, no, I have not spoke to the sewer department.
They may make you put a manhole on Technology Drive and your line from your sewer manhole on your property out, because it's taken in two six-inch lines, may have to be upgraded to an eight-inch. And then we get to the details. The Barron Industries no longer exist. You can't refer to them anymore. Go to E.J. Foundry, Nina Foundry, talk to the town and find out what their specific catch basin and manhole covers are granted, but you can't refer to something that does not exist. And there is, there will not be twelve inches of gravel under manholes of any sorts. That will be twelve inches of stone. I'm just telling you what Graves is gonna tell you.
Okay.
And then on your manholes for your sewer, then allow mortared pipe and manholes. It has to be core and seal boots. Uh-oh, oh, we got a wait, right? Hang on a second, there we go. Let's see, don't exist. And then the, on the left side on sheet D1, over there where you call, it's under the profile, mountable berm or mountable berm. Is that from the existing pavement on the street? I have no idea where that is.
I can't really hear exactly. What was it, a mountable berm?
A mountable berm is what you have it labeled as. Optional. It's on sheet D1, straight down from the left corner, your first detail. It's right to the left of your typical pavement section.
Um, I'm, I think it's the construction entrance, the riprap just to basically keep the filtration out of the street that...
I don't know what it is, because it, I don't know. Because it's right above your construction specification, the second detail toward the top, it says mountable berm. I don't know where it goes. I don't know what it's for.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's the, the construction entry, so just during the construction phase, you know, like a riprap entrance to kind of knock the mud off the, you know, off the tires of trucks if there were to be any, just to prevent any sediment into the, in the street during construction. That's just a temporary entrance.
Okay, so that, that stone entrance, you know, for your construction entrance there would extend the whole fifty feet? Wide, does it show on the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, well, it's fifty feet long, ten feet wide.
A wide?
Ten feet wide and fifty feet long.
Yeah, I don't think that'll be accepted by the town at ten feet wide. You bring a trailer truck in there or something that's eight feet wide, nine feet wide, almost ten feet wide, it's gonna have to be like fifty by twenty. Ten feet wide's barely wide enough for a car. We'll see what the peer reviewers say. Does anybody else have a comment? Nick, do you have anything to say, or Wendy, or Ron, or Todd?
I'm all set at this time.
I'm all set at this time, too. Thank you.
So you guys wanted to continue to the next meeting in December, correct, Todd?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So may I have a motion to continue this to our next meeting?
This is Nick. I'll make that motion to continue this to our next meeting.
May I have a second?
This is Todd. I'll second it.
We'll take a vote. Nick?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Ron?
Excuse me.
Is that an aye?
An aye, I didn't hear.
I said we're voting to continue this to the next meeting on December eighth.
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
I myself is an aye. It is a vote. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Have a great Thanksgiving, everybody.
You too. Be safe.
You too.
You too. Thank you.
Second on the list tonight is applicant Eastland Partners Incorporated, requests for site plan approval under section 3.2, 2.1, and 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for two family dwelling, a property located at twenty-thirty Albert Street, Auburn, Mass., map sixty-five, parcel seventy. They have requested to continue to the next meeting at least. We have a motion to continue this to our December eighth meeting?
This is Nick. I'll make that.
Okay, Nicky?
I'll second it, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you. Going down the roll for a vote. Nick?
Aye.
Wendy?
I think we should let it run out.
Ron?
No, that should be...
Wendy, you said aye, okay. Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
I myself is an aye. It is a vote. Next up on the list is applicant SZLL Realty LLC, a definitive subdivision plan for thirteen lots, single-family home development, a property located at one-seventy-eight Hampton Street and nineteen Eaton Ave., map twelve, parcel twenty. They have requested to continue to the next meeting of December eighth. They have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to continue that until the next meeting.
May I have a second?
Second now. Wendy?
We'll do the roll call vote. Nick?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Ron? I'll come back to Ron. Todd?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself is an aye. It is a vote. We don't have any other discussions on the, new, I don't have any new business unforeseen by the chair. Does the town planner have an update?
Uh, I do not.
They have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion, John.
May I have a second?
John, one second. Will you approve the minutes from eleven-ten?
They don't have them.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have them.
We don't have them.
Okay.
Motion to second?
Roll call vote. Nick?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself was an aye. Meeting is now adjourned. Have a great Thanksgiving, everybody. Stay healthy, stay safe.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.